All right, we're on the main street of Gosford here. It's been a while since we've done an abandoned building. But this is the target for today. This is the Brisbane Water County Council Building. The old clock tower up the top there. And I recon this place maybe three or four months ago. And the only way to get in was around the other side. But someone has done our job today nice and easy. They've busted out the plywood through the window there. Big Mav Mavericks is going to get in first. And we're gonna scour this heritage listed building. We've got one problem just up the road here is 5O. Cop shop's just on the left up here. So you have to be careful climbing in through there, although it's a bit off the street. We're gonna do a drive by around the perimeter so to show you guys what the arse end looks like. This vacant block of land back here, that's where Froggy's used to be. Froggy's skating rink, roller skating rink. That got torn down. I gather this building is still standing because it's heritage listed. And people have to incorporate it into the new building. You can see graffiti all the way up. I'll wait till Mavericks take some pictures. So wait till Maverick gets back in and we'll go down around the other side. And then we'll see how we go getting in there. Got the flashlights ready. Looking forward to this one. I'm gonna hand the camera over to Mavericks now. We're gonna do a perimeter drive by around the entire block before we decide to go inside. I'm gonna handle that. Mavericks, cover that from the bottom there. See how still you can keep it? All right, so just past the roundabout up here is 5O. You can see the police sign on the building up there. We're gonna turn right here. We're gonna go down. Georgania Terrace. And here's the fence on this side. When I did some reconnaissance of this place maybe three or four months ago, that hole on Main Street was not there. So this is where we were gonna jump in from on that green, whatever it is, electricity box. We're gonna jump in over there. You can see all the windows busted out on that building. This is private property, so you can park in this little car park here and jump the fence if you had a tabletop, you'd or something. But it says that security heads in on there every so often. It's boarded all the way around. That's the Central Coast Leagues Club. I'll give you back to Mavericks. You've gotta be game. You've gotta be game to graffiti that up there. Look at that. Gossy Good Times. Look at the awnings all falling off. One, two, three, four, five. The fourth one along. Pigeons, so I think we're gonna find plenty of pigeons in there. That building there seems to still have people in it. This building here is still okay. It's this building here, the one in front of it, and the Brisbane Water County Council Building which is there. Froggy's used to be in that gap over there. But there's no trespassing signs. Look at that guy looking at us. He thinks it's 5O. You better keep on going, brother. Can you see a hole anywhere, Mavericks? There's no holes whatsoever and barbed wire everywhere. No one's going in from this end. Look at how they've got right up the top there. The graffiti as well. Right up the top there, there's graffiti. They've hung over the edge. We might find squatters in there, we don't know. And this is it. Unless there's a way, oh, sorry lady. Unless there's a way just on the side there. But there's barbed wire there as well. So there's nothing, nothing on Baker Street where you can actually climb on in. So that electricity box in that driveway is your best bet if that board is boarded up on Main Street there. So if anyone decides to come and explore this place, the way that we get in, if that gets boarded up sometime in the next couple of weeks or month, try and jump on that box, the green box, and get into the car park just there. All right, we'll go around and park and we'll make our way in. Just about to make our way in to the Brisbane Water County Council Building. 5O's just down there. The clock tower, 50 Man Street, Gosford. Former Brisbane Water County Council Building and clock tower situated on the main street of Gosford, Man Street, dates from a period of growth in the Gosford area. In the mid 20th century, Gosford progressed from a relatively small community, which was based on primary production, to an urban industrial centre. Hopefully you guys can pause that and read the rest of it. There's no getting in from this side. All the windows have been busted out. And to think that the cop shop is just up there. Surely someone from the cop shop can hear what's going on. There's the old clock tower up the top there. All right, head on in Mavericks. Now's your chance. Mavericks is gonna head in. I'm gonna look out for cops. Do it. Well done. I'll get the gear and I'll come join you. It's not too bad. You're a little bit off the street here. Not many people can see you. I think the front of this building was just behind these boards here because you can see some old... Where's the seats? There you go. You can see some old seats. Now, they wouldn't have moved them in. I think that would have been the front of the building. There's the front of the building there. All right, take the camera Mavericks. Now, if you want to fall over or something, it'd be a good sign. No one's seen us come in. We aren't here. Let me get, um, this is gonna be right on the sun. But before I belt up and put my torch on the side of this, I'll see if I can just get to Central Coast Leagues without the sun hanging on here. Now, there are reports that back in 2017 when Froggy's was still next door, there was up to 40 people squatting in both buildings. This building and the Froggy's building. And they were all moved on. And their belongings, I think, were placed on Baker Street down there. That article's online. So if you wanna type in on Google, "my best friend, squatters in the County Council Building, Brisbane Water County Council Building, and Froggy's", you'll see pictures of all the homeless people that were squatting. Nice drop down there. That was squatting here back when times were tough. Can you imagine if we decided to come and explore this place in 2017? And we rock on in and there's like 40 people in here and we're filming? Can you imagine?
They should move on.
We'd be disturbing the peace.
It's a move on order.
It's a move on. Move on order. All right, I'll put the camera, flashlight on the arse end of this camera and we'll light up our way. I can see stairs down there. I love stairs. All right, we've got the Ace Beam X80 GT on. And this is lighting up our way. I'd say that would have been someone's sleeping quarters once upon a time. Look at the drop below the seat, Mav. How far down does that go?
Straight down the car park.
It could do. No, no. Just there. I don't know what's under there, but you could probably crawl in on that. So this here was where people rested. There's the old exposed aggregate pebble seat. That's the kind of stuff that I used to do when I was young. It could have been. Could have been. That's some good work though. Let's go see what's down here. So these would have been the front doors right here. Completely smashed. Some nice timber up here.
Skylights.
Skylights, yeah.
Really, um, see that?
Oh, yeah. Wow.
And a big carriage.
Yeah. They've graffitied over a dam. I don't know if that'll come over and come out on pictures. You reckon we can get that? It's like a lion on this side, isn't it?
Yeah, massive lion's head.
Yeah, two guys there holding a shield. There's a lion's head just here. There's his teeth. And there's a guy with the bow and arrow.
That's a shame.
I know, that is a shame, isn't it? What's that little thing hanging over? Anything under there?
What?
This thing here.
No, I don't think so. Sign, anything with a sign?
Yeah, nothing.
You're assuming it would have a front counter here or something?
Yeah. This would have been the entry. We've got the big air conditioning down here. Did you hear that? Oh, it's a pigeons. Toilets, wheelchair. There's a pigeon shit in here. I would say this video is gonna go for quite some time. So I would pause it. I would go pour yourself a beverage. Grab yourself some chips. Because we have got a lot to explore. We're gonna go downstairs. We've got upstairs. We've got air conditioning ducts if you're going. We've got a lift. This is Wanji. Just trying everything down here. There's nothing up there. Probably another floor. Hang on. Another two floors up there.
The previous floor and then right there, stairs?
Um, yeah, it's up to you. Now, you lead the way. I'll just follow you anywhere, wherever you wanna go. Let me just go into, are these toilets going anywhere? Let me just go in here, just in case we find anyone. As for all the explores that we do, we always find the toilet smashed. The mirrors have been totally smashed. Roof clating has been taken off. This is where we started from. If we can get to the roof, we might find some really good footage from the entire Gosford district and Brisbane Waters. That's what? Yeah. Is that pigeons or is that someone talking? Yeah, no. Let's go up there. Let's go up there. So these are the... Hang on. There's people here. Go upstairs. I can hear people up there. Did you get the fuse box, see? Did you get the fuse box?
It's all your drop.
Beautiful seated doors. Don't do it. Don't do it. This would have been a water feature. So you've got stairs going the other way. What's that for? So you've got stairs coming down this way. This was something.
It's pretty much the same. It's got the detail on the colouring.
Yeah, I know. All right, head on up Mavericks. Just be mindful, yeah? Just be mindful that someone... Remember the dude at the North Manly Bowling Club? Who had a knife on him? So we're getting up towards the clock tower, yeah?
It was upstairs, so...
Isn't it? Okay, so let's do the top level first and then... Where's your problem? There's where your leaks coming in from. Mavericks and I have got the appropriate footwear on today. And if people are wondering how these thongs last for so long, Optimus Prime here has a special patented design. Let me show you what I do. Washers. If you put washers, and a lot of bird shit, if you put washers there, the thongs will last you twice as long. No one else has ever done that. There's the main street. Let me turn the light off. Up here?
Yeah, or right down the building.
It's a little bit further down.
The clock doors are down behind, right down the line.
Yeah, the cocktail's up there or something. Shit, the girls are coming. They're looking pretty. The girls are looking pretty. Oh, flowers. Let's go down here, Mavericks. I know, I look pretty sturdy. Just be careful of nails, that's all. Okay, so that's the car park that I mentioned to you guys where security comes in. So that little green fuse box type thing would be on that fence line there. If the front of the building is boarded up the way we got in, jump into the car park. Mavericks, did you get one over the... Get the picture down here? This reminds me of Wanji where they throw shit down the bottom as well. Hang on, let me get on this side. Yeah, there's a door right on the bottom that takes you out to that little section. We'll get down in there after. This level here might have been what? Offices, a lot of air conditioning up the top here. So this goes to the Goosey Good Times building over here. Someone's private shower and toilet. And a backpack. Plenty of mackers. Yeah, I know, Brisbane Waters looks spectacular. Look at the railing over there. Can we get out in there?
Yeah, the next room.
Is it? Here we go, got something down here. Let's see what this reads. "To whose home this is, you are loved. You aren't alone. Payne is only temporary friend. P.S. Thank you for protecting Sydney. Sacred..." Sacred... Something he liked. "Gorillas to wish you the best. Hunter." 21. There's Brisbane Waters down there, looking into the Central Coast Leagues Club. There's a few... I don't think you'd be getting over that fence. Look at the drop. So forget about that. But you can jump in on that side. There's a milk crate down there. So someone's jumped in over the fence onto the milk crate. Got more stairs down there. Looks like a school. That's what my school used to look like. Different railings. You got some Lego? Might have been a family living in... Plenty of children's Lego. So this would have been the kitchen. Looks like the pigeons that made this home now. More toilets. Just turn the torch on just in case. Okay, I don't know what this would have been. You've got a little hole here from the kitchen into whatever this section would have been. If you're a fan of graffiti art, you're gonna see plenty of today. There is sun everywhere. Those Mavericks. That sun's right on us, Mav. We've gotta wait till it's down. Standing on chipboard here, which when the rain gets on just crumbles like chocolate. This room's probably the most sketchiest room that we've been in. But you can't see to the bottom. There's a lot of buildings that have been in, the Maltings, Wanji, and a few others. Is that your torch, Mav? It's working. I thought you said it wasn't working. That scared the shit out of me. I'm thinking, who's got their torch in there? Yeah, that's where the water's been getting in. Get a hole over here. So that's where we came up. There's the stairs. Is there one lot of stairs up and down? Is there stairs going that way? Should be an elevator shaft there somewhere. Okay, so there is a gap here. It goes all the way to the ground. Ooh, that was sketchy. There's more abandoned buildings over there. They're pretty new. That's only just been boarded up not long ago. It doesn't look like anyone's been in there. There is a bit of graffiti on the awning there. That's about it. Keep our head in just in case 5O. So you've gotta be careful of these holes. They go all the way to the bottom. Okay, so there's the air conditioner, one more level up. So the lift, the elevator shaft should be just down here. Okay, so there's the stairs and there's the elevator shaft, one level up. So it's mirrored. So you've got the toilets in the same spot. And elevator shaft. Is there another level? It looks like there's another door up there. I thought this was the top level. Ready for 25,000 rooms. Oh, one step forward. Up further? All right, if I do that. I think there's another level up now. Hang on, I'll come over to where you are. Someone's been eating pigeon. Looks like there's cats in here. Make you dream of places like this. He's the type of fans that I used to do when I used to work for TD Priest. Okay, so offices here for sure. Those windows with those blinds with the louvers. Some sort of bookcase. This is all storage for files. Toner cartridges for Canon, HP Laserjet, Kyocera. Got some old cigarettes down there. Does this just come to a dead end here? It's very blowy. Is there a balcony here? Yeah, it just drops down. This is where I was standing down here before, looking up. See, there's that other building across the road there. Completely boarded up. Won't be long before kids get into that one, I'll say. So you reckon this is offices here? There's all these louvers. Makes sense being offices. They would have come in. The lady would have come in on the morning.
It's all council trained to see it. It would have been all office stuff.
Would have opened up the louvers. Bright sunny day. The little sections just cordoned off everywhere. So yeah, like different offices all the way down. So this would have been someone's office over here. You would have had someone. I can hear voices down there. Is it? Here we go, got something down here. Let's see what this is. Gosford Man Street Minor Air Conditioning Plant. Shut down and operating procedures. Where's those voices coming from? We haven't even been in the Goosey Good Times building yet. I'd say we'd have to go on the ground floor to get in that one. Can you see the people? Across the road. The sun's playing havoc. Look at that place. Jesus Christ.
Yeah, it looks awesome.
I know, look how many floors. One on the bottom and then two up. We haven't even gone through that one yet. So let's hit the very top level. And that's pretty much finished this side. So that building over there, I don't think is the County Council Chambers over there.
No, you've got access to it. Yeah, I think it was part of it.
You reckon it's part of it?
It's access right through it all. A corridor and stuff.
Huge building. Well, that one's not heritage over there. This one's heritage.
Maybe the clock tower is heritage.
Oh, you reckon?
Well, facade of this building would be heritage. Nothing, they're not, they're not heritage.
Yeah, yeah. You gonna go around this way? Okay, yeah. Go around and we'll go up the stairs. Now, this is worth just coming in again at some time with the guys that couldn't make it today. Like Tim and Darren would love this. Reminds me a little bit of the Bowmain Leagues Club. Holy s air conditioning crap. Do you need to... If you need to take pictures of everything with the light, let me know. There's the pigeon's nest just up there. Just would have been a door either. Okay, we have hit the top floor. So the clock... Okay, we have hit the top floor, so the clock tower. Now the clock tower's on that side, isn't it? Yeah. We're far, way far back in. Well, this leads us to the roof. No? Doesn't take us there, oh yeah, yes it does, have a look at that, how cool is that? We are right here. Let's just see here, so this is the top of the elevator shaft. Here's the roof. Yeah, have a look at the ladder here. I'd be very exposed if I climbed that ladder, reckon anyone will see me?
Yeah.
I'm gonna have to do it, now that I love climbing. What do you reckon's in here? Now that's an ice drop, uh, let's hit that twenty-five thousand lumens. So that just gives you an idea. Of what this flashlight's capable of, so turn it off. You can absolutely see nothing, turn it on. That's what you call a high-end light. I'm gonna go first? Just be careful, the stairs can take your weight. They look all right, but. My weight as well, but just be.
I'll be fine.
I'm solid muscle. The lift motor room? Come up and have a look at the lift motor room. So the guy's fixing the lift. We'd be coming up here, huh? That would make a nice picture out there. But it's. That is a big motor. Had the same motors, similar motors to at Wanji as well. I know, wasn't it? What an amount of, this, this must be all from the squatter days. You don't bring that amount. Of plastic bottles up here, unless someone was sleeping up here. You got that? A plaque? I'll have a look. You got one? Oh yeah. Johns and Waguewood, it's got a year on it. Six twenty-four, I don't know what that says there. Can't really see here. Got it, I'm just gonna film out here, I don't want people seeing this torch on it. There's Mann Street down there. Slater and Gordon building in the distance. On the. End of this building down here, that's where Froggy's skating rink. Roller skating rink used to be, the famous Froggies. And the Central Coast Leagues. Alright, we're just gonna get Mavericks to lift this door. He should be very capable. He's quite strong, this man. Ooh yeah, alright, so they gave us all the way down, so we've got another one. This is what, it's just a drop arm gear, I gather. Instead of walking it down the stairs. Is it? Yeah. That's what it is, if they're bringing up heavy equipment to fix this. Lift, the motor and stuff. This makes it. Or it might be something large, because you're not gonna get it up the stairs, but uh. All right, let's do it together. Uh, give us the camera. And I've got a few pictures of you down here. We're gonna see if we can get to this clock tower, we can't find another floor. That gets to it, Mavris is gonna test out the roof. To see whether I can hold his weight. The clock tower. Is over there. Hang on, I'm gonna come out as well. Okay, hang on, I just wanna see what's underneath. This little door. Look at that. Wow. Let's get outside. See if we can hit this clock tower. Wanna grab that? There's a little building just over here, we don't know what that is. Slater and Gordon. Just need to get on to the first roof. Oh, is it? Everyone can see us, here's the problem, if. Someone wants to be an arse off from these unit blocks, if someone's out on the veranda. So this has come off. Yeah, this one here, it's a Bailey's ladder. Looks pretty secure, although. This looks like the, the roof in here. It looks pretty secure, you know what this reminds me of, I've seen fall the other day. You see the. Adverts for that? The girls climb a two thousand foot. Abandoned television tower. Long way up now. Just on the roof. Again, this is something, the sun's playing havoc. This is something to hop on. Yeah, when the uh, when the sun's down. Hi, I'll tell you what, you're right about. What you're saying. Nothing there, rusted, nothing there rusted, this is just held in with some small bolts. This is ready to give way. Yeah. I don't think I'll be coming up here. At dusk. It'd be okay if I had two hands, but. Because if I had two hands, what I'd do. I'm very. Reverced in shimmy sliding. Shimmy sliding, so if I had two hands, I could shimmy slide. It's from watching um, the movie Lockup with Stallone. Uh, I forget who the actor is in that, but he was. An expert at shimmy sliding. And Stallone in that film goes, you expect a shimmy slide against three hundred feet of. Pipe burning at two hundred fucking degrees Celsius or whatever. It's a great line.
Oh, is that with Kurt Russell?
No, that's um. Oh, I forget what the other guy's name. It's just Stallone where he gets put in the jail and um. Donald Sutherland is the. Is the warden, and he tries to stop him from getting out because he escaped from Wanji, be careful, man, look at that hole there. Oh, is it, okay, this is under the, this is where I shone under, yeah.
I can't believe nobody's coming up to Wakefield for one of the units.
I know, everyone's in, aren't they? There's not, not one person out. So if anyone's thinking about doing this. Be very careful about this ladder. It's only held with. Two bolts up the top there. Nuts and bolts. What about if I go down over here? So there's the clock tower there, I don't think you can get into the top of it. Taxi there, it's got no idea what we're doing. That's the top section done. We've still yet to. Enter the Goosey Good Times building. And we will go on top of the roof if we're in here long enough. At sunset. Which I think we might be. I don't think you can get to the clock tower. Through the roof, yeah. We'll go over to where. Go over, that sun is a killer. Shit, was it nail? Fuck, did it get ya? It's the same thing that happened to Darren. Whoa! Yeah, there you go, see, that's why you wear correct footwear, that nail stopped. From going into his foot with those thongs. That would have gone straight through shoes. So that's it. That's it there. That's it there. And there's no way into it. No, that's not it. Must be another room over there. Yeah, it's, it's further over there. Okay, so this is what I could see, you know that little building when I was on the ladder? It was in, in here, I was uh, up on the beams, the rafters. When I was a young fella, I used to be into pigeons, and there used to be a place down at um Golf Parade down at Manly. Called the Hornet House, those. Where? There it is. And there's the window, how do you get to it? Only from the roof. That's what it is. Yeah, the hatch, that's how you get into it. The hatch, we've worked it out.
You need a ladder.
So you need a ladder.
You need to go back up and get the Bailey ladder.
Yeah, so if anyone wants to try that. Although it's pretty risky.
Let us know how you go.
Let us know how you go, we are in our fifties, so. We'll leave that to the young fellows. But back to my story. When I was a young fella, and those living on the northern beaches would remember, there used to be a place called the Hornet House. In Golf Parade, Manly, it's where Manly Freezers used to be. And, because I was heavily into pigeons. A lot of racing pigeons used to get caught up with the mongrels. In places like this, in the roof. And I used to jump on the beams by myself, eleven, twelve years of age with a net. I used to have a cage on the front of my pushbike. A net? No, not a net, a, a net, to catch the pigeons. You know what I'm talking about? Not the old girlfriend, a net. And, a pigeon, yeah, pigeon net, and man, I used to come out of there with six or seven pigeons at a time. Race, you're racing pigeons with bands on their feet, so they were good, good racing, well, you wouldn't call them good because they got lost trying to get their way home, but. Still, some would have good pedigree. And I used to head down there at nine thirty at night, stay there for a couple hours by myself. So if people wonder why I'm adept at places like this, I was doing shit like this by myself. When I was young. No one else would come there with me. So you get used to it. You notice who got the nail in. The foot, it wasn't Optimus Prime. It was his deputy mavericks. Did we go all the way down over here?
That's that other building.
Is that Goosey Good Times? Okay, let's go through Goosey Good Times. Uh, it looks like it's closed. Goosey Good Times is closed. Yeah, it's locked, unfortunately. We can't open the door. Where'd you go, oh, you're coming through there. Oh, we've got another stairwell. Mavericks. I'm liking stairwells. There's a hat? I don't think I'll be washing this hat. Born in the Rockies. Got it? Let's see if we can. Spin around, okay, so we've got ivy growing in here. Look at the graffiti over there, who the hell? Got up and did, did, did that? Look at the size of it. That must have been, and so that's where Froggy's was. Over there, someone's got some big spray painter or roller brush. We haven't even hit the bottom yet. I'm really disappointed that um. We never got to go into Froggy's. That was an iconic place back in the day, I even heard. Matthew Johns on the Matty Johns Show talk about. People from Newcastle catching the train down and. Going into Froggy's. Is that where we were over here? So it was just another door to come in? Let me just see. How many entrances there were. Yeah, just another door. There's the stairs. Yep. It is. And the Goosey Good Times is on the end. Of that building there, and so they must have got onto the roof. Yeah, there's the awning that's fallen down, they must have got onto the roof and hung over the edge. To, to do that Goosey Good Times. There it is, you can see the roof here. So this is where we have to get up after when it's sunset. And we'll have a great. View of Brisbane waters. I have not seen one person. In any window yet. Yeah, someone's got up on that roof, so that's the roof of that ladder. That was sketchy. Someone's got up the top there and hung over the edge. And decided to graffiti that. Must be the car park down the bottom there. And there's the foundations for Froggy. Froggies. So again, we're gonna be hampered by the sun here. There's the Central Coast League club. We go there, there you go. So I think along that footpath over there. That's the picture that I saw online where all the squatters' bags were put. I'll probably incorporate that picture. Into the pictures that Mavericks has taken today. What a great building to explore. You live for shit like this. If you can, Mavericks. Hang out one of those windows over there and get the, the facade over there. With the sun shining on it, it looks awesome with all the smashed windows, it looks a little bit like Wanji. Still to this day. With all the explores that I've done. Nothing will ever top Wanji. If anyone's getting into exploring. You have to. Go do Wanji, Wanji is the mecca. You could spend all day there. And still not see the joint. The sun's slowly going down. Communal showers. What is this thing? That's welded shut, whatever it is. I wonder if Mavericks saw that? Mavericks, that better be you. What is that?
Well, that's, that's what, that's a safe room.
So what were you banging on?
The other side, there's nothing looking. It's a door, it's all steel hinges in it.
How thick is it? Yeah. It's like a safe room.
Yeah.
That has been welded shut. Okay, so it was here. It looked like it had a timer maybe, like a lock.
Right, and it is it.
Oh, there it is, yeah, down the bottom there. Okay. Yeah, that looks like a, like a chub security thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because the hinges top, the hinges top.
Yeah, this is where they kept the cash.
These were going to be ripped up at some point.
Yeah.
Those two would have been ripped up at different times than everywhere else.
Yeah.
We've opened it up.
We'd love to get in there. You've tried to open it? No chance?
No. The pin's, it's a pin.
Okay, yeah.
I'll get a photo of it.
Yeah, get a photo. Get as far back as you can. We'll get one with us standing next to it as well. So you've got the urinals in here. Ooh, we've got a closed door here. Got a closed door, we don't know what's going on. Nothing. That's where we came from, wasn't it?
Over there. Oh, stairs.
We're going upstairs?
Yeah.
Hang on, we'll just get a few shots of us in front of this safe door. We've got sirens in the background. Although that doesn't sound like 5O, it sounds like Fire Brigade. If they stop around here somewhere, run.
We're going to strike the roof.
Yeah. Okay, here we go. That's where you jump in. If you can't get in from the hole on Mann Street, you jump in through there. And you come in through the bottom and you work your way up. We're just about to head down now. Where's the stairs? What's in here? Ooh, this toilet smells. It smells. Look at the vines growing. Mav, come here. You got a picture, get a picture of these vines. Nature is reclaiming the dunnies. Can you hear that?
Whoa!
Look at that. It looks like Medusa's hair.
Wow.
Yeah, nah. Wow, right. Oh, you had to hold that a little bit. See, it's telling you to hold the phone, so hold, yeah. If you see that thing come up on it, hold it for a little bit. Hold it. Now, so it's sharpening the picture. Oh, shit. More coming in through there.
A vending machine?
Yeah. It is, I've seen it. Yeah, I've seen it.
External sanitary pads in search for dressing over.
Oh, that must have been in the other room. I've seen a sign in the other room. All right, let's head down those stairs.
You won't see how much bullshit is in this room downstairs.
Really?
Oh. Have a look at this.
Oh my fucking god. Yeah, that reminds me of the haunted house. That's what the haunted house used to look like. So that's it, that's where they, um, they breed down there. So when we have a look, when we get into that room and we look up, we are going to see nests of gnaw. Nests of gnaw. Sydney Cruz, killing it. I love you, bud. Private property, see, there's the private property thing. No unauthorized entry, day or night, but even in here. Here we go, we've got some boys wanting to come in. We may even see these guys in here. They're rowdy.
Rowdy, want your bike?
Rowdy. This is the, uh, the shit room, is it? So we are still in the Goosey Good Times building, yeah?
Goosey Good Times.
You see, look at the vines here Mavericks. You might get a better shot of them here if you stand there. See if you can get one landscaped as well. Shut out the TV screen. Referee appointment, Central Coast Division Rugby League Club. So, okay, so there's that fence. So you can't jump that because there's a massive drop. So if anyone's thinking about coming in that way, don't, because you're going to cripple yourself. Well, that looks nice, isn't it, kebab? That's what we're going to have later on tonight. That is a kebab, isn't it?
You got, uh, any of yours on?
No, it's Rio Banana and Macadamia Sweet Calzone. Maybe over that. So it puts on the kilos.
Walk out?
Walk on in. I've got to change batteries soon. Watch for nails. Is your foot bleeding or not? Did it go in or did you just prick yourself?
No, just, just the top.
Just the top of it, yeah. Okay, so kitchen here, and the old stove. Hear those kids? They're close, they might be in the car park. Yeah, those kids are coming in. Let's see if we can film them coming in. Okay, they're still on the outside over there. And the sound is echoing. Are they in here or not? Where are those kids? I don't know if they're in here or not. The sound is reverberating. Mavericks, come and look. They've got an egg here, so they've got some babies that have just hatched up in here somewhere. So that's the pigeons that pushed that egg out, the egg shell out with the leak. Although I can't hear any sporking. What is it? Here we go, we've got a full egg here, so this one never made it. Unfortunately. Oh, you know, that's come out as well. So this has been the room of choice for the pigeons. It's like a schoolroom. Okay, the sun's going down. I wonder if there's more buildings down here or... Or is it just the car park? You can see car park there. I did see an inscription on the wall here. Here we go. Welcome, join us on your, on the journey. I don't know what that means. That's where the pigeons are building. In here. There's another egg. And they're in there. Looks like another building here. That's a foundation for a building, so this building's been torn down. This wasn't a car park down here. Look at all the pigeons along the railing there waiting for it to come back in. They're not happy that we're in their home. I've seen an inscription here on the wall. Quality Improvement Centre. You got a picture of that, Mav?
No, I can't get a map.
Tell me when you can see it. I've got the light on it. Central Coast Region Quality Improvement Centre. A commitment to quality. Make sure you get landscaped as well. Got it? Come and have a look out this window here and let me know if there was another building that's been demolished. You can see the, a car park. I think there was another building there. Yeah, straight out that window there. That. Yeah. And have a look.
Yeah, I'll get a photo of it.
Yeah, no, but tell me if you, if you think there was a building next to this building.
For sure.
You reckon?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that's foundations to another building, yeah? That's not a car park?
No.
Yeah. So whatever building was there was torn down for some reason. So I gather that wasn't heritage listed.
No, the under is this one's heritage.
Is it clocked out? Yeah. That's wrong. So it's strange, that article online, when they were getting everyone out, that was from 2017 and they wanted everyone out because they were going to start work. Still no work up to five years.
Well, something is on demolition.
Yeah, that's about it. So they mustn't have got the order through for keeping the building or the clock tower the same. How cool does that look down there? Imagine looking down there in the dark. Have you seen that shop?
Oh, you're all the way in?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got a photo, I can come in through the door.
Incredible.
Another person.
We're just making our way through the Goosey Good Times building. Mavericks has yelled out, there's some sort of poster on the ground here. There's glass in it, right? Hold on, what's in here? Okay, so it's an exit, so we came in one of those doors. Fucking John Rambo's in here with us. What does it say? Ooh! Clubs protect jobs, charities and the community. Vote Registered Clubs Party Legislative Council Upper House. It makes good sense. Do we have a, a date on the one? Yeah, definitely haven't been in this room. This goes all the way over here. Ah, you're right. Okay, so these are the stairs here and the elevator shaft. You are correct. Okay, but I don't think we went into here.
No, we can go down that way.
Yeah.
We've done this front building first.
Yeah, front building. So we haven't, oh yuck. We haven't seen in here, let's just see.
Yeah, we'll walk through this room here.
We have?
But then we'll back up the stairs.
Okay. I'm just going to shine down here because I remember there was a lot of rubbish. That's where the kids are. We're going to catch them soon. Pigeons. It could be. We're going to get the fucking shit scared out of them when they see us. Mavericks down here. Shit down here. Oh, there's a good hat down there. A real good hat. See it right down there? Oh, we've got a baby in here as well. Yeah. All right, let's go over and see, find him. One, two, three. Going to ask him. Here we go, we haven't come out here before. What have you got? It's time to do the bottom, I think, my friend. Could be. Stairs, we've got to go down one more level.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we've been here. So we've got one more level down.
We can go to the car park in the, in the front.
Yeah, we've got, yeah, I think this will take us, this will take us through to the car park and then we've got to try to get on the roof now that the sun's down to get a good view of Brisbane waters. Got a ream. Hot water system. Are they? Can you see them? There they are. Don't say anything, let's film them coming out. I think we're 5O. That's what? I don't know. I want to see where they get out. How are you, boys? Waving at the camera. We could be anyone. Oh, there's a hole right there. How easy is that? See you, guys. Thanks for showing us the way out. Well, that was a quick entry and exit. Maybe they got scared. Hang on there, Mav, I've got to change this battery. All right, we're geared up for another couple of hours now. That's me. Showers. Shell area. We're going to go down into the car park or is there more rooms over that way?
Yeah, we haven't even gone in yet.
Okay. Okay, let's go in and then we'll go out through the car park. I want to get a view of the, um, of the building. Rent a fence. That's done you no good. Exercise bar. Well, there you go. If anyone wants to come in, parking Baker Street. And just where I'm pointing, that's where the boys came in, so there's a hole over there. We couldn't even see that when we were driving around. This must be where the trucks used to back up. So this is a loading dock. Only just noticed that. So the trucks would back up here. And there's your loading dock. Warning. These premises are protected by electronic security alarms at all times. Look at the, uh, the old locks on the gates. Haven't been open in years. This is one of the more covered explores that one can do. This is one of the more covered explores that one can do. Once you're in, not many people can see that you're here. I feel safe having John Rambo come in here with me. All air-conditioned. Where are you Mavericks? Mavericks has disappeared. Oh, we've got nice carpet here. Love to get a picture of that. Mavericks? Where are you? We've got carpet in here. Oh, over here. I was wondering where you were. Did you get a picture of that, uh, come and have a look at this? It's one of the better graffiti. Did you get it? Oh, no, did you, hang on, I'm gonna pop down just in case your torch didn't get it properly. See if you can, see if that helps even better. This just look out to the car park. Oh no, this goes down into the bottom car park.
That's the main, the main entrance, the stairs there, which is those stairs that go up and down.
Oh, okay, the elevator shafts here?
Down the lift well.
Yeah, okay. Oh, here we go, did you get a picture of that? Notice mops are to be used for the following purposes only, green band kitchens, hard floors and other toilets. Okay, so we're at the bottom of the shaft.
Yeah.
Yeah. A bit of water down here. Ted, what, if you wanna, if you wanna dispose of a body, there you go. What you do is put his feet in some besser blocks, concretum, and throw them in there. There's a car park there. Okay, so this is where you enter, look at the, uh, it's like the old school doors. Yeah. Doesn't go down any further? Better go out that back and take a picture of that loading dock. Hey, we've got to head around the other side, Mav. There is thongs. There is two. I've taken them. Mate, these are in good condition. Look at that, my size as well. Where are they? Flowjos? They're flowjos?
Yeah.
I've never heard of them. Have you heard of flowjos before?
No.
Mate, I'm so lucky with finding thongs. Oh, sorry. Got it? Well, this is just a storage area. We've got to head around that other side to get, get you, get a picture of, um, the loading dock. Oh, we've got some pizza boxes here. What was that pizza shop that you seen down the bottom there? Was it Joe's? Pizza Inn. Where are they? Store locations, Bexley, North, Cessnock, Charmhampton, Edgeworth, Gosfords. Okay, so these ones from the Gosfords store. That's a nice little cabinet up there. I could use that. Someone has put that together. Some handyman back in the day. Is your flashlight working, Mav? Can you see where you're going? All right. I just thought I might be taken off without you, can't see. It's not that dark? Oh, you can see in the dark, I forgot about that, yeah. X-ray vision. Ecamist. Ecamist. Here's another hat. Let's see what this hat's like. Mate, this hat is not bad either. Got a bulldog on it. Laundie Hotels, don't you work for Laundie Hotels? Number forty-seven. We have got the Central Coast Bears water bottle, oh, the North Sydney Bears. Chickadee? Yeah, this one's chickadee over here as well. Or maybe that's the back of the North Sydney Bears bottle, let me see. Yeah, it is. So North Sydney Bears and on the back it says Developing Central Coast Youth. This is a rather dark room over here. Mate, this X80 GT is just performing like a beast. What's that little section out here? How do you get out here? Is that what the hat is down here? Where? There's a head out there. There is two. Good spotting Mavericks. You reckon the hat's over here? Okay. This is like a minefield through here. There's gonna be nails and there's gonna be glass. But we have done things like this before in the past. And in the past, things like this was, weren't done with thongs. How's that? Is that good? I think it's just that Laundie Hotels, Hotels hat. Hang on, hang on now, let me just see what this hat is. Cause it looks relatively new. The Mad Hueys. Mavericks will take this one, I reckon I can clean that one up. Give it a wash. Is that good or do I have to come to the window? Hang on, hang on, let me come to the window. If we're gonna take a shot, let's take a big shot, how's that?
That's the one, that's the money shot.
Is that the money shot?
It's the one.
Okay. Can you grab that hat? Are you allowed to carry that? Cause I've got thongs and a whole bunch of things. I've gotta turn this torch down a little bit, it is burning my hand. Over this way. So you can grab it just from the sill there. You see it? Have a look at the other side. That'd be a thirty dollar hat. Have a look at the Mad Hueys. Stick that on eBay. Huh? Yeah, we're repurposing. That's three less things, my flowjos and the hat, that's three less things that the people that clean this place up have to do. What was that? Yeah, that's what I think as well. I think so as well. It's a classic hat. Yeah, no, that's, that's what caught me, seeing all that thing stamped in the inside, that's quality hats when you see that. Yeah, I'll clean that up, don't you worry. Let's go over here and then let's go to the loading dock, so this was like a youth centre for all these.
You knew there was what, dance signs upstairs?
Oh, was there, okay. So this is, yeah, for the kids. That's what that door was, okay. So go in there. So that's exactly like the other door. Yep, identical. So that door there, we found upstairs without any handle on it. And all the valuables, can you move a little bit more? All the valuables that have been kept in here. Hang on, I gotta start, the camera's just about to go. Anything? Do we have a date on there? Surely there's a date on there. We've got envelopes. We have got burnt show bags. All right, this one, hang on to this. Get a picture of that, hang on. Get the bears. Get it landscaped, go back a little bit. And I'll hold it. Get me in. How's that? That's the most important bit. Don't forget the flowjos. We are in the bowels. We're in the bowels of this joint now. All right, we've got to get up to the roof because otherwise it's gonna get too dark. Let's do this loading dock, wherever it is out here. And we'll walk around the car park and then kitchen, you been in the kitchen? So the boys would have been preparing the snacks. So there's the stairs we came down, there's an orange measure. Let's head up to this loading dock. It's just starting to get dusk. Yeah, have you ever heard of D-size battery anchor? Are they from our alley? The old dolphin torches. All right. I'm gonna get a picture of you up here as well. Cause unfortunately when I'm filming video, I can't get too many pictures with Mav. We should, we need another person here. I miss the days when everyone used to come out, sometimes it'd be four, five, six of us. Do you need a light on there or not? Let's head over that way. We're just gonna film where the froggies roller skating rink used to be. And that's why we take these videos because, see, the next generation is not gonna be able to see froggies. I think there might be a few videos of froggies online, but not very detailed ones. I think I've even uploaded one that I stole from someone else on my channel. If you go into playlists and I think click 2016, you might see a little bit of froggies inside. I think I took someone's video and added some of my pictures that I took from back then as well. So this was it, all these foundations here are froggies and if you see pictures of froggies, you see two massive staircases, one here and one over here that used to filter the people back out. Very similar to the staircases that used to be on the Manly Vale Hotel. Where many a rock band played back in the day. So look how wide it was, that was a big place. That was a huge place, look how long that fence is. Have we been under them, Mav, or not? We, we were under there, were we? All right, we'll head in under there and then. Okay, well, heading under there and where's, where do we have to go up the top there? To get a whole view of, um, yeah, all right, let's do that. You know what we haven't got? Goosey Good Times. We've got to get Goosey Good Times. Who, yeah, I know, but this, this way you can get it as close as we can. Look at the Central Coast Car Park. Central Coast Leagues Car Park. Gossie, it's not goosey, it's gossie. Goosey sounds better. That makes for an amazing shot. Anywhere here. You can just see in through the windows of the Central Coast Leagues. Look at that, Gossie Good Times. That's done with a roller. For sure. That is done with a roller from the roof and that palm tree looks like it's growing out the side of the building. But if you see, it's down by the building. All right, that's where we've got to go, so let's get in. I wanna go in through that cage there, through the door and then we'll make up a way up upstairs here. No more mucking around, let's get up on that roof and get a. Get a photo, the sun's gone down now, but we'll get a good shot of Brisbane waters. There's a lock on this gate. That looks a little bit rough through there, should we head around the other side? Yeah, through here Mavericks, or are you gonna go through there? Yeah, coming through there. It'll make good video. All right, straight up the stairwell, let's go. And that's it. Then we're gonna head into the entrance. Mavericks is keen to go on the merry-go-round on the ferris wheel. And a kebab. Kebab, fellas, what you do is you go mixed lettuce, tomato, onion. You go sour cream, extra barbecue sauce, so it drips down to the bottom of the bag and you always ask for es, extra crispy. And if you go to a kebab store. Deep fried potato with extra chicken salt. And if you ever get to a kebab store where they put it in a foil and then put it in the bloody foil bag, never go to that kebab store ever again. The kebab has to come off the hot plate and just go straight into a bag for easy eating. Foil bag, yeah, of course, they're all foil, foil bags. Well, that's it? Yeah, I know, they're tiring, aren't they? I would have preferred the lift, but it's out of action. Mate, I follow you. There we go. Now it's right up. Yeah, it's one more. Are we even in the right side? Yeah, no, is it on this side? Is it on this side? It is up that side? I trust you Mavericks. God, I love those quotes. I love those quotes. We're here? What's this thing? Shavings, what's all the shavings from? Curves. Where we going? This take us out to the roof?
Yeah. Have a careful nails.
Yeah, is this where you got the nail? Do you wanna jump through the front window or do you wanna try to exit through where the boys exited? You don't wanna walk around? All right, here we go. We're gonna get the Gosfords arounds. Now we might see people in their unit blocks. So this doesn't make sense, what's going on here? You weren't meant to go over here. What? Hi, Bo. No, no, the brightness is no good on this, so. Now we've got to get over here and go on this roof. Mavericks, watch a gap. Why there's a gap, you hope, mate? Why there's a gap, you hope, mate? Okay. Here's the palm tree. And here's dusk. On the Central Coast. What a view. From the top. Looking into, still, still not allowing to focus the, the bright off the water there.
Yeah, the reflection of the water.
It's a reflection of the water. It's not allowing me to film out that way. Unfortunately. So if anyone is thinking about doing this, maybe do it early morning. And with the sun up over here, there's the clock tower. With the sun over there in the east, then you'll get a beautiful view out that way. Well, that might just do us. I think that is a wrap. That's a great building to go through. This is a good, this is a good building for anyone just starting out. Easy to get in, pretty safe. And if you want to start your YouTube channel with a pretty good building, I would suggest the Brisbane Water County Council Building. Turn the camera off here. Wait till we get to the bottom and we'll film us coming out the window. Not sure. I tried to find online when it was built and what they're doing with it, but it only shows. Oh, it does show a whole bunch of people standing, I think, a number of years ago, uh, saying that this, these people supplied electricity to the surrounding region or whatever. But the main one that comes up is the squad of, I think forty of them. That got moved on in two thousand and seventeen and the bags that lined Baker Street there, I think it was. That was quite. Is that the entrance there? It's nice and quick. There it is. Going out is going to be a lot easier. This torch has done me very proud today. Is it still on green? Still on green. The batteries have not died at all and I've had it on six thousand lumens pretty much all the way. With a few bursts of twenty-five, they haven't even put it on thirty-two thousand five hundred. Look at this. So what, you were saying something last time we popped our heads in. They've marked these to put it back together. You reckon this has got something to do with the clock tower? That's the clock tower.
Of the sign outside, the clock tower and those big round things.
Yep.
That's what they are.
Ah, okay.
That's the face of the clock.
Okay, and they busted them. So whatever idiot left them in here, you're not going to put it back together again.
No, some kids busted that. Yeah, yeah, no, glue that back together.
I don't think they're ever going to fix it.
And then these are all, this is all the sandstone that would have gone around it.
Yeah, see, they should have, they should have known the kids were going to get in here. Yeah, should have been stored. I know this, yeah, unfortunately, I don't know if the cam, the camera, I don't think will pick it up, but. Go, go over there, Mav. Just point out a few things. So point out the three horses' heads. I can't see. Okay, so you've got.
Three ears.
Yeah, three ears. And there's the horses' heads there. You've got the reins, legs down there. And, and there's something below it, like a dragon.
Yes, uh, yeah, it looks like some, some sort of medieval.
Yeah, medieval lion or something, yeah. And you've got reins.
Through here, there's the back legs of the horse down there.
Yeah, back legs of the horse. Yeah.
You've got the reins coming back.
Yeah, one guy steering the horses and another guy. Shooting a bow and arrow, crossbow.
Shooting back another line here. It's got two arrows in the line.
Come on there. You've got a wheel. That's the wheel of the carriage? Yeah, wheel of the carriage.
And then you have this dude. Actually, two, two, two guys here as well. So there's a shield here.
I don't know if it's two guys. Is it two guys or guy with two heads? Oh, yeah, two guys, yeah.
Um, um, two swords. It might be guy with two heads. You might be right. Two heads.
Yeah, no, it's four, no, it's two guys, two guys side by side.
It's got an arrow in the back of the line too.
Yeah, like you said, that would have been a pretty impressive stone piece there. It's gone to the shit. Mate, you reckon they could clean off all the? I don't think they're going to use it. I suppose if they do something with the building, maybe so. Anyway, let's get you out and, uh, I'm hungry. I haven't had a drink for four hours. I do like this building. I love that, um, that little aggregate seat there. Because it reminds me of back when I was young and doing that kind of stuff. No one does that kind of stuff anymore. Yeah, no. Well, we'll budge you farewell. That's our first explore for about three or four months. That was a cracker. Uh, until we meet again. Adios.